All right, it is 6:08 and we will reconvene back into the workshop. I misspoke, Shelley, when I said we wouldn't have anything to present, and we do.
Yeah, I do have a motion. I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a personnel action form for the city attorney based on the discussions held by the city council during executive session today.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? And Mr. Garcia is opposed. It passes four to one. All right, thank you, council. And at 6:08, we will adjourn the workshop. And at the same time, we will open the city council meeting on October 24th. Hope you all got some candy, and you know that was to sweeten you up, so hope that happened. All right, at this time, Councilmember Hughes is going to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings as we gather here this evening. Thank you for the rain, and thank you for your continued protection over our first responders in our Kerrville community. May your hand guide us as we seek to accomplish the meeting goals on tonight's agenda, and we ask that our actions tonight reflect your will. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve our community. Let us continue to work through your wisdom and your grace. Give us your joy and the powerful presence of your peace. We pray these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Stuart.
Thank you, mayor. And let me second that, Councilmember Hughes. We are very happy for the rain, aren't we?
We are.
Praying for some more. All right, we have a few activities coming up. The first one will be this Saturday. I don't know if you know it, but about two states west of here, there's a giant hole in the ground. A lot of people like to visit it. It is very pretty. And we'll have a gentleman here Saturday, Kevin Hartley. And he'll be talking about the Grand Canyon. He's a Sierra Club outing leader and a Wilderness First Responder. And he'll be at 2:00 PM. He'll be in the library, and he'll be showing some photographs, maps, and highlights of a few of his favorite hikes and drives out there. Like, he's done that once before out here, had a good turnout, so. How many of y'all have visited the Grand Canyon? Pretty. Might want to come see it and maybe plan a trip there. That's Saturday at 2:00, so keep that in mind. Some activities this weekend. Actually, one of them's this weekend, one of them's next weekend. But the one big one coming up this weekend is the Third Annual Mountain Bike Festival. That's going to be Saturday and Sunday out at Kerrville Shriner Park. And there are so many family-oriented activities and bike races over this two-day event. There's really too numerous to go over here. So if you want to see a full schedule of that, the events, you can go to our website or our Facebook page. They're all listed out, but we are really looking forward to that, expecting a lot of riders out there. And then next, I believe it's next Saturday, November the 4th, we'll have the last movies in the park for this season. It's going to be out at the Trailhead Beer Garden. The movie is Top Gun Maverick. So since it's Top Gun Maverick, we encourage everybody to cruise on over there. Okay. All right. Next Tuesday night, a week from tonight, Family Fright Night, always a big event. That'll be out at Louise H. Park. Starts at 5:30. This is one of our favorite events every year. Trick-or-treating, lots of games, costumes, big night for the kids. Encourage everybody to come on out. This is, we see some of the costumes up there, but the people in this town are so creative when it comes to coming up with costumes. It's an amazing event to go see. So encourage everybody to come see that. That is a lot of fun. And then the last one I want to mention, still a little ways off, the Holiday Lighted Parade is November the 18th, and we still have time to enter a float if you want. So encourage people who want to do that to contact the Parks and Recreation Department. Last year, we had, how many? Ninety? So how many do we have forward? So where do we know?
This year. There's about 75.
Seventy-five, so, okay. So let's, how many can we have?
Hundred.
A hundred, so let's get 25 more floats and make it a really great night. And that's it for me, but looking forward to all these events.
Stuart, on the Tuesday night in the park, the Halloween, is it too late to register for that?
For?
The haunted fright night. Fright night, thank you. Is it too late to register to participate?
To be a vendor? Just have them contact us.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't know of anyone. I was just asking that if someone could register to come with a tent or a car or whatever.
Sure, just have them call Parks and Recreation.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you, thank you.
That's it for me. I'll turn it over to y'all if y'all have any announcements.
Okay, council, anybody have anything? Okay, we do have one. We have somebody that we want to recognize and want to say thank you to. And if Ms. Shirley, Shelley, I can't say anybody's name right tonight. Shelley has been nominated for the 2023 Texas Municipal Clerk of the Year. And she was nominated by the Fredericksburg City Secretary, which is just really neat. And she has been with Kerrville how many years, Shelley?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. And she served as the city secretary since 2019?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I right with that? And she earned her Texas Registered Municipal Clerk Certification in 2022. So thank you for what you do for us, and we're just really proud of this for you. It's great.
Thank you. I'm very honored and very humbled.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. We have a proclamation for the municipal court week. Shelley, do you have an official one for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Play it once.
Yes, I need to do it someplace. That's okay. All right, let me sign this. Come on up. All right, yes, please come up. These are people that you don't hopefully know, so. But we're going to ask anybody to raise their hand if they get over the seat, so. So, City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas municipal courts are state courts and play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And that has to absolutely be very truthful. Whereas the City of Kerrville has hosted the municipal court since 1942. You've been around a long, a long time. And whereas the City of Kerrville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Kerrville Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 6 through 10, 2023, as Municipal Court Week in Kerrville, Texas. And I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. And I have signed this. And we thank you guys. This is great. I would like to have you all introduce yourselves and tell us what you do, how long you've done it, and then we'll see if anybody has a few extra words. And I was going to ask you, are you going to serve donuts and coffee the week of municipal court?
Well, I was going to say, y'all are certainly welcome to provide us with those things.
All right, very good. We'll start with the minority here.
I'm Nelson Spitler. I'm the bailiff and city marshal, security for the court. I've been there 15 years, 15 years.
Thank you.
Lucy Pearson. I'm the judge for municipal court, and I've been the judge for, gosh, a year, maybe a little longer. Anyway, prosecuted there in that court for a number of years also, and I love it. I try and dispense justice every opportunity I get.
Yes, I am. I'm the court administrator there, and I've been with the city for 11 years, over 11?
And I'm Rachel Ramirez, the assistant court administrator, and I've been with the city for 10 years.
And I'm Tracy Lewis, and I am a certified court clerk now, and I've been with the court for two years.
Okay, very good. How many cases? And just somebody maybe an average ballpark of what you would see a week? You see, we're all looking down.
Sometimes we average about 100 a week. We're a little behind this year, but, you know, it's been steady.
This past year, we saw 4,800 cases.
Okay, very good, very good. Yes, it is a lot. Well, we appreciate you guys very, very much, and you have to have a lot of patience to do what you do, I think, so it's great. Well, let's, I think they want some pictures, so.
You're over there by the administrator.
We'll let you guys hold that. You guys just stretch together, and I'll stand here. This'll work. All right, very good. Turn around, take the hat off. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
You look really good for being over here. I'm telling you, Ryan.
Thank you. Some of you act like you know these people too. Yeah, yeah, we do. All right, and I believe we have a presentation about those dogs and cats, right?
Yes, we do. So the city has had a community services agreement with KPA, Kerrville Pets Alive, since October of 2021. Reporting requirements in the agreement state that KPA must provide a financial statement, a report of the number of people serviced, a projected scope of services, and a projection of performance on behalf of the city. So Karen Guerra and her volunteers are here. Karen is the president of KPA, and she's here to provide that information to council. Karen?
And your group must be all of those beautiful orange, ready-for-Halloween shirts, right?
And nice to meet you. I'm Karen Guerra. Oh, I'll do it for you. Do it for me? I get nervous with that clicker. Thank you, thank you so much. Can you hear me? Nope. Thank you for telling me. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. And congratulations to you, Shelley, as well, and the municipal court employees, even though they've left, so appreciate all that they do. Kim said a little bit earlier about what the community services agreement was with Kerrville Pets Alive and the City of Kerrville. We thank you so much. This is the second year that y'all have funded our efforts for $6,000, and I think we've really spent the money very well. Again, she pointed out that we were to hold to spay and neuter clinics during the year and offer pet wellness, as well as adoption and microchip services to the community. So with that said, we can go to the next slide, please. We really researched how to satisfy the need for the reporting requirements for this agreement. And last year, we handed out vouchers for $100 apiece to citizens to get spay and neuter services and realized, you know, we're still, we're still learning, I call them learning layers, about the best way to achieve this goal of high-volume spay and neuter services. And I realized that, just like last year, there is a lack of affordable and accessible spay and neuter opportunities here in Kerrville, a lack of veterinarians across the country. So this year, we decided to engage an organization called Animal Balance. It's a nonprofit just like we are. They have been around quite a while. They operate out of Austin in Oregon, I believe, and they travel all over the world. They were recently in the Galapagos Islands. And what they do is they go around and empower communities to be able to have high-volume spay and neuter clinics and pet wellness clinics. So they, again, they came into Kerrville and started about a year before. We did budget about $40,000 for them to come in because we were going to do 200 pets over a three-day period. And that would mean bringing in all their equipment, all their staff, which is veterinarians as well as vet techs, over a three-day period from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 PM at night. You'll see, we were lucky enough to get the Red Cross building, Debbie Zamica, there. We'd like to thank her for that opportunity. It was a great opportunity to collaborate with them, being the Red Cross, and we hope to work with them in the future. What you'll see on the screen right now is the banner on the left, which shows our partnership with the city, as well as Animal Balance, the Red Cross, and other area foundations that were also a part of that funding along with the city. On the right, you'll see our, and some of, I wanted to mention again, some of our great volunteers that are here that did help with this amazing effort, and we've got our furball committee here, members as well, so appreciate them. But the ones that were there can, we were overwhelmed. I mean, we had several Zoom meetings, but the night before the clinic, on September the 30th, we were brought into the Red Cross building, and it was like, it was kind of like a preparation for like a MASH unit for a mass amount of people coming in with pets the next morning. We set up kennels, we brought in supplies, we got a lot of crates from other shelters and entities in our community and supplies ready for the clinic. And I think we were a little nervous about what was going to happen the next morning, and it was kind of controlled chaos. But on the right, you'll see that's our, was this actual surgical center that was completely tarped, all on the floors, and they've done this so many times, and they've worked on dirt floors before. So that was a great facility to have that in. But that was our training the night before to get everything organized. We can go to the next slide, Kim, please. On the left-hand side, you'll see that was the lineup in the morning at 8:00 AM. Actually, they started showing up at 7:00 AM before we even set up, lined up on the corner of Earl, Garrett, and Jefferson, and they wrapped around the corner and set very quietly until we were able to go down the line and assess, we had the veterinarians and vet techs go down the line, assess the animals, to see if they were viable enough for a spay and neuter surgery that day. And that happened for three days in a row. We had to have security on the street with KPD, which helped, and the sheriff's department as well. On the right-hand side, you'll see a very happy family. They got three dogs done that day. So we did have families that had had multiple pets, but all very cooperative because they were happy they were getting a service. It was $15 for cats and $20 for dogs. We can go to the next slide, Kim, please. That was, again, our surgical suite. There's some of the dogs. They don't know what's about to happen to them. They are happy right there. But again, borrowed a lot of crates from other entities here. And so the surgery, as well as the recovery and waiting time, was in that room. On the top right, you'll see one of the veterinarians from Animal Balance checking out a dog to make sure he's okay to go. On the bottom right, you'll see some of our feral, which we call our community cats. We did those as well, and some friendly cats. That's after recovery, where they're sitting and waiting to be picked up by their owners. They would not let us take any pictures of the animals under anesthesia for liability and safety reasons, plus a lot of pet owners don't want to see their pets, you know, sprawled out either, so I understand that. We can go to the next slide. This is one of my favorite slides. That is Kara. She is one of our Shriner University pre-vet veterinary students. She helped out with the clinic along with another one, and they just kind of rocked it. I couldn't believe they were so mature and handled things so well. She, we are in a partnership with Shriner University now to help them enhance their pre-vet program, and so they're volunteering with us. But in a nutshell, our Chip and Snip Spay and Neuter Wellness Clinic, we serviced 202 pets over a three-day period. 139 of those pet owners were from Kerrville residents. We sterilized, which means spayed or neutered, 201 pets. We administered 158 rabies vaccines, 104 core vaccines, which are basically antivirus vaccines, and we implanted 150 microchips, which are great because they're registered to pet owner, also to county animal control. So those are great to put those microchips in. We can go to the next one. Again, that three-day spay and neuter clinic pretty much encompassed and satisfied the needs of the reporting for our grant. However, the one thing that we, I wanted to tell you a little bit more, is our microchipping program and adoptions. We do vaccine clinics twice a year. This is a great picture of a collaboration between Kerr County Animal Services, our KPA volunteers, vets, and vet techs. And we come together and have a, again, 200 people showed up for this clinic, and that's just the crew at the end after we did our vaccine clinic. You can go to the next slide, Kim, please. Set up in front of our office is amazing. If you have driven by there when we have these clinics, it's like, and several of our volunteers have been there, but they're wrapped around. It shows the need. I mean, people show up two hours in advance to get, this is a free clinic, so you've got all your core vaccines, rabies vaccinations, and so they showed up in droves. Go to the next slide, please. Again, there's some of the animals and some of the vet techs and Kerr County Animal Services techs giving the animals rabies vaccines, core vaccines. They got ear cleanings, all spa treatment, any kind of exam they needed. So you've got a lot of bang for your buck at this clinic. And happy customers at the end. You'll see, we served 200 residents at that clinic. This was on June the 19th. We administered 300 vaccines, and we implanted 81 microchips as well. We think every animal's going to be chipped in Kerr County if we're, when we get finished, so. Okay, next slide. Back to the adoptions. We also said that we would offer adoption services and microchipping services as a part of our Kerrville agreement. We do everything that it takes. I'm sure that you see our, in the newspaper, in our post about the need for adoptions in Kerr County. We don't have that many public adopters, so we pull out all the stops. We make big signs, like you'll see that cute little pup who was actually adopted that's in the play yard at Animal Control, and we just like to get people's attention. On the right, you'll see, this is the county's, nothing against the county, this is the county's version of accounting for our microchips that we give them for free. And every month, we get a sticky note with the number of microchips that we are given to Kerr County Animal Services. It's a free service. Anyone can walk in with their pet, get a free microchip, and also, if you lose your pet and it ends up at Animal Control, you can reclaim your pet and get a free microchip. Go to the next slide, please. And again, we do, we go out of the box for our adoptions, adoption services. It was very hot this summer, as we all know. That is our mall adoption. We went to the mall so everybody could be cool, the pets could be cool, and we could be cool. We even spent the night at the mall with the dogs, and the cats, so they wouldn't have to be there overnight. But again, great success at that event. We'll do that again. And the next slide will show our adoptions. Kerr County Animal Services, our county shelter, is not open on the weekends, but we beg and plead all the time for them to let us get in there on the weekends and have adoption events. So here we see some of our volunteers, actually, that are sitting over there with a dog for adoption, and then on the right, some happy customers adopting a cat on the right there on a Saturday. Microchipping, another, pictures say a thousand words with us. And on the left, happy customers, again, a dog they had, family had lost, and ended up at the shelter, got a free microchip from Animal Control through KPA. On the right, another man had come in to get his dog microchipped because he had heard about it. In the middle, you see a very happy cat that was trapped, that was not very happy by a neighbor, ended up being an owned animal, and went home with a free KPA microchip. So this year, we've spent about $4,000 funding adoption fees for Kerr County Animal Services and spay and neuter surgeries. What we do is we offer half-price adoptions all year long. It's very affordable there. You get a lot for the adoption fee, but we've just raised those. But it helps people when they know that it's half-priced, and sometimes we surprise them when they get to the window and they want to make a commitment to a pet. The staff will say, well, guess what? KPA's, they're going to fund half, half, so that always helps. And we've also microchipped, offered 300 microchips to date at Kerr County Animal Services. So with that said, we're always trying to think of better ways to do things and serve the community. And after our wonderful Animal Balance experience, we decided that, you know, we brought in an organization, we decided to keep the money local going forward. And so we've teamed up recently with a local veterinarian that is going to offer vaccine, free vaccine clinics for us. We're going to actually be paying for the rabies vaccines, as well as monthly or quarterly spay and neuter and wellness clinics in 2024. So that's very exciting for us. Great experience with Animal Balance, but we want to keep that money local. And speaking of money, the last thing I want to end up with is our furball. If you haven't had your tickets to the furball, I hope it's okay if I plug this. We're a nonprofit. I know some of you are already going, but it's our large fundraiser for the year. We do appreciate the city's money and faith in us, as well as other foundations, but we do, we're all volunteer. Over 85% of our funds go directly to animal care. And so we hope that you will support the furball. It's December the 2nd, and we still have tickets available on our website at KerrvillePetsAlive.org. I don't know how long I've taken, but does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, anybody? I am surprised at your budget. I had no idea that you guys, that it takes as much as it does take, and so I congratulate you there on that. And what you do for our community is absolutely wonderful. I just appreciate it so very, very much. I would like to have all of your volunteers stand, give us your name, say it out loud so we can hear, and tell us how long you've been working with KPA.
Larry, you want to start? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Larry Schmiders. Been working with KPA for about two years now, and it's been a pleasure.
Susan Burns, I've been with KPA for about a year now.
Jody Tillman, and I've been indirectly for a couple of years, but hardcore for about a year.
Wendy Crona, about the same with Jody. New to the board this year and chair of Furball.
Beth Patterson, coming up on two years.
I'm Russ Patterson, about two years.
Carol Lanza, two-ish years. And I, you know, volunteers in the event.
Lauren Zizer, and this is a movie I'm here. What's heaven?
And my husband on the end, stand up. He's one of our biggest volunteers, playing the arrows, so, yeah, very supportive of our organization, so anyway, we're all.
You need to get him an orange shirt.
He does, he actually has one. Yeah, he does. He does have an orange shirt, so.
And then I think we have somebody that sits up here that is very much involved.
Yeah, she was in some of the pictures up there, yes. Absolutely involved.
Karen and I formed Kerrville Pets Alive almost four years ago now. We've been working day in and day out.
One of the, one of the founding members. But I tell you, we're all volunteer, and we could not do this, everyone puts in. It's very hands-on, and they're just amazing, and I don't tell them thank you enough. So I'm glad that you're here tonight, and very much appreciated, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you. And keep up the good work.
Okay.
All right, let's see. We are ready for our visitors and citizens forum. Shelley?
Yes, ma'am, we have two.
Okay. George Barudy. And I will ask you guys, if you will, let's do our three minutes again.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. It's not important that you see it as I'm talking, but, so what I'm here to talk about is the terrors that I was expecting to be on the agenda, but it's not. So very briefly, what I've described there is something that we don't normally see, which is the financial impact of some of these things. We generally look at just the plus side of things, and what you have there is a couple of, I would argue, corrections. corrections, but we can discuss them later. But bottom line is, the, the TERS is going to obviously collect taxes and rebate it to a developer. The thing that's missing is that the percent increase of tax revenue inside the TERS is going to be the same as what it is outside the TERS. So historically, the last few years, our maintenance and operations tax revenue has been increasing at about a 3% clip each year. So inside the TERS, it's going to do the same. So as you look through that, what you see is, over the 27 years that we're talking about, rather than getting the $12 million out of the TERS, the developer's going to get closer to 16. It's, it's going to be upwards of more than that. $16 million out of there. Why is that important tonight? Well, as you look at the next one of these agenda items, you're talking about more money going to them. In, in concert with this, the developer would receive 20-some million dollars, and what you see at the bottom of that sheet is essentially what I've been saying all along. The developer will receive the full market rate for these houses at the end of it. The community will be paying the full rate the developer claims these houses will be, about $320,000 of value. After subsidy, public subsidy and the sale price, they will, the developer will receive about $320,000 worth of money paid for by the community. So ultimately, you're not, in a TERS, you're not going to receive the bang for the buck. We're not going to get as a community any reduction in housing costs. The community is still paying the full price for housing costs. Our problem isn't the housing costs. Our problem is we don't have jobs that allow people to pay for the housing costs that we have. So if you could use EIC money to do what it was intended to do, which is go get jobs, then we'd be better off. Thank you.
Barbara Dool Ferguson.
Barbara Dool Ferguson. I live here in Kerrville. I have a couple of things that I've been really concerned about. Hate to bring them up in the meeting like this, but the council passed them, and if you're willing to pass them, I guess I shouldn't be afraid to bring them up. First off, and these both happened within the last two months. P&amp;Z approved a final plat during stage four water restriction, which violates a city ordinance. That should not have happened. And I have mentioned it publicly, and nothing yet has been done about it. I don't know why that was allowed to happen, and it concerns me when our committees, commissions, our city council approve things that are in violation of our city ordinances. The second one is this city is currently operating their city wells without a valid permit in violation of state law. Right now, we have unpermitted wells, and that is not allowed under the state law. So I'm very concerned about both of these, as they have to do with water, and that does tie in with another subject that's going to be later on. We're continuing to look at housing development, bringing in over 500 homes in addition to the 125 that are there, and there are many other developments that the city's looking at. I've heard nothing about aggressively going towards solving some of the water issues. We're still in stage four. And acting like this doesn't exist, that there is no problem, is not going to solve it. And I see us headed down the wrong direction. But most of all, I would like, when the city does address these things, that we have some regard for the law. I have to abide it when I drive down here. I can't violate the speed limit without risking a ticket. And I think that the city council needs to abide by state law and their own city ordinances. I believe that's what your oath requires you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ferguson, I would, would like to suggest that you meet with some of our city staff and get some answers to some of those questions. They would be delighted to meet with you and explain things. So.
I don't think I need any explanations. They're real clear. Thank you.
All right, counsel, we are ready for consent agenda, and we have four items on there. Is there anything that anyone feels we need to pull?
I request to pull 4A.
All right. Is there anything that anyone who is here also wanted to pull? All right, do we have a motion for, for B, for C, and for D?
I'd like to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is a majority. All right, Roman, 4A.
Thank you. This is a resolution authorizing the waiver for the fees for the Veterans Day Parade. I had a question on the summary statement, so I was glad to see you here in the room. We came downstairs. If you wouldn't mind helping me understand and get clarification on this, it's just something that's in here, and that's pretty much it. In the summary statement of the agenda bill that we have, it says, it gives us information about the fees that are asked to be waived, and then there's, as a reminder, staff's recommendation last year was to approve the fee waiver for the first year only, and to assess fees for subsequent years pursuant to the adopted fee schedule ordinance and consistent with other community events. And then, of course, it gives a statement that council approved this last year. Would you mind expanding on that and just either you or Mr. Rice on, I was, I was surprised too, because usually under a recommended action for agenda bills, we have moved to approve or to deny something under the recommended action is just to consider the resolution. So I assume there's something staff could probably give us. Any additional information, though?
No. Excuse me, council member, yeah, too easy. So last year, that was a recommendation, obviously coming on board, and it changed, it changed, the organizers changed hands, kind of got late in the game. And so I went ahead and just said, hey, let's, let's do it this year. That way, we can make sure we reassess any policies or anything going forward to have it, you know, clear and clean across the board. So that, that was on me and with me kind of coming in late.
Okay. Would you mind just sharing right now what policies you could, you contemplate as thinking about later?
That, so, basically what, you know, as I'm kind of learning all the process, trying to figure everything out, what have we done historically, you know, where do we want to go? How do we want to get there? What have we waived before, if any? And so this was kind of brought to my attention initially, and, you know, talking with council member Harris, and then, of course, you know, with the VFW. It kind of came in late in the game, and so we didn't want to delay, you know, supporting our veterans and during the event. And so we said, hey, let's just move forward with it, not put any burden in the change of hands, and then next year, we'll continue to move forward with whatever policy council decides to do.
Okay, that's fair enough. Want to get some more? Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor. Unless there's anything else, I'll make a motion, if you're ready.
Please.
I move to approve resolution number 37-2023.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you. And I would also suggest to them, and, and we need to maybe help them out with this, they could possibly get some sponsors in, in the future. So something to consider. All right, we are ready for 5A. Shelley, if you will read this for us, please.
Ordinance number 2023-27, second reading, an ordinance admitting chapter 58, Article 3 of the city's code of ordinances titled smoking and enclosed public places and places of employment. To clarify various sections, revise regulations in accordance with state law, to include the definition of a minor, and to change defenses to affirmative defenses ordered in publication and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Counsel, does anyone have any questions on this? We talked about it and had gone over everything. Do we have a motion, then?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2023-27 on second reading.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, 6A. Shelley?
In our local agreement for the improvement of Al Mooney Road from its intersection with Peterson Farm Road to its intersection with Memorial Boulevard, State Highway 27, and a portion of Peterson Farm Road from its 300 block to its intersection with Al Mooney Road. There are no citizen speakers signed. Oh, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you all for taking the time tonight. We discussed a little bit of the project in executive session. As a part of those discussions, the city and the county have been talking about ways for us to upgrade Al Mooney Road, along with a portion of Peterson Farms, to the access point of the currently EIC-owned property that is adjacent to the airports. For the purposes of the discussion regarding the road, this segment that starts at Highway 27 and works its way back towards Peterson Road and takes a left going northwest just to the edge of the EIC-owned property, the EIC is, is currently under negotiations with a manufacturer that's looking to purchase all 86 acres of this property. And as a part of that, we started looking at, what are the access points for that property? There's Peterson Farm Road that leads straight out to 27, which is a straight shot, and drives right through a bunch of residential areas. Or there is Al Mooney Road that goes adjacent to Al Mooney, and that portion of Peterson that is significantly closer would shorten the route for the developers. In addition to, would traffic that away from Peterson Farm Road. And so in that vein, we asked engineering firm to give us their opinion of probable cost on the project, and they have turned that over to us. And we have worked through the ILA, and the cost of that road project for the rehabilitation is estimated at just under $1.7 million. And so in the agreement, in the ILA that you have, there's a cost share of $850,000 per. I will point out that the county had asked that their share not go above 850 per the agreement. And we would be initiating the design, we would be handling the construction of the project, and all those costs are built into it. There is, should y'all decide to move forward, we had a few minor markups in there, non-substantive changes to it. And I can go over those very quickly with y'all if you'd like. On page two, between section one and section two that's in your packet, we've added a contingency of the agreement, which essentially says that this agreement is contingent upon the develop, not the developer, the manufacturer closing on the property and initiating the process for their build. And then the only other ones, Mike, you're going to have to help me if I'm saying only. Section 4A, the county asked to have approval over the bidding documents that we would put out. That's all. Not, not really germane, or not, not too important. We're okay with that. And then section 5A, again, the county asked that they add consent of the final design and the bid documents in there. And I think that was, that was the majority of it. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions y'all might have.
Can you go over that last one you just said?
Section 5A, so in that, right in that section, right after the state and federal laws, the county wanted to add that they would have consent of the final design, their engineering department would review it and sign off on it, in addition to the bid documents.
So that's three amendments that are going to be made to this agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, okay, so I got the second one you said, and I just want to clarify, there's going to be another section added between section one and section two that states that this whole interlocal agreement is contingent on the company developer.
Entering an agreement with us.
Entering an agreement with us.
Yes.
For the development.
Yes.
Or with EIC. Is it with the city or with EIC?
Well, it's really to be determined. It's contemplated to be EIC, though, at this point.
Okay, so if, if we approve this tonight, if the, if the closing never happens, then this is null and void.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And I know that you don't like to get changes up here. I understand that. We've been working between the commissioners and us, all kind of like all the way up until today to get these things finalized.
And the county will look at this on the 13th of November?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is really ultimately no risk, low risk, because it's an ILA between two political subdivisions, not between political subdivisions and a private entity. So it's not a P3 ILA. You know, at any point, it is between the county and us. So there's, it's contingent upon, obviously, other things happening, but this agreement is strictly between county and us.
I mean, I got to say, I'm, you, you hit it right there. I am never comfortable, especially if I'm not given a copy of whatever amendments are being put in here, because essentially what is being asked of council right now is to approve it in our local agreement that we actually don't have a copy of. So.
And I understand that. The, and, and if the changes were, and I don't want to say it this way, because I don't want to diminish the changes that would be added, substantive, right? So protection clause for you that basically says that they have to perform in order for any of this to be valid. And then the other two changes were simply that while our engineering team and our public works team create documents, that they would look at those document, the county would look at those documents and say yes to it. Those are the only three changes that are in there.
And, and really kind of the other, you know, point, Councilmember Garcia, on it is, it's just like, similar to other motions or other council meetings or certain things where, you know, if there was an amendment to an ordinance and a council member, and I think that's happened almost every single council meeting in some form, where there's a motion to amend an ordinance based off of their, same thing. You know, there's little non-substantial things that'll happen, and then council reserves the right to make those amendments, you know, through a motion or through an amendment, you know, to a motion on the parliamentary side. Very similar. We try to get y'all stuff as, as quickly as possible, but, you know, sometimes the non-substantial stuff does come up. So.
And, and not to go back and forth this anymore, but it's different because council isn't the one creating and drafting the agreement, whereas we're simply presented with it, and we see it on Friday, and now know the day of the meeting that there are changes to it. If anything, we could have received a paper copy just saying, here are the changes that are going to be made, they're going to be inserted in these particular sections, and that would give us the ability to have it in writing and see it with the agreement here. And normally, it is practiced when amendments are to be made by a council member, usually, my colleagues have usually asked that be provided in writing, so everybody can see it and have a copy. And so I think it's fair to say that anytime a council member is kind of criticized or questioned about why to bring up things the day of the council meeting, I think it's fair to say the same thing right in this situation. And I think we just need to make sure, to set a balance of what the expectation is between council members and, and the city staff members.
Claire, we got these changes, this, I mean, finished these changes this afternoon after discussions with the county, so.
Well, and I also think that part of the reason that we got them the way we did, Roman, is we need, the owners need to, they need to have, this is important to have in place for them. So we're kind of under a deadline because we won't meet again until it's later. So, so there's some extenuating circumstances with this that, but, you know, you are, your, your request is, is, is a good one, and they will honor that in as much as is possible. This is kind of one of those times, it's, it's tough. So.
I want to have a finalized version for you each and every time.
Sorry?
I want to have a finalized version for you each and every time.
And I want to make sure you know, too, that if there are things like this, it doesn't have to be rushed, right? There's, you should never feel like, and if we're going down to the deadline of something, then in my view, something's happened before that, that's caused us to get down to this deadline that probably shouldn't have. And we probably need to evaluate what caused that, right? If, if this is, is this to a deadline right now, today?
This one is to a deadline.
But is, Claire, help me understand what that deadline is, because I didn't know that.
The county's going to approve it on the 13th of November, so that's when they're considering it. So.
Can we approve it after they approve it? Since they're going to now have those changes in effect on, in writing on their end, they can come back to us immediately afterwards, because their meeting's probably right before hours, right?
Per view of the board. Right? So.
Their, their county meeting would be the Monday right before our council meeting, right?
That's, that is correct.
So we could approve it the next day?
Again, the, the purview of the board.
Okay, I just, I'm kinda, okay, so then, with that, I move to table the item until our next regular meeting, subsequent to the county's approval, right, the day right before.
Do we have a second to Roman's motion?
Then we have a guest speaker?
We do.
Okay, then I'll withdraw and I'll make the motion again after the speakers. Sorry, I didn't realize we had.
All right, so we'll go ahead with our speaker.
Peggy McKay. Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. Some of the things that have come up tonight have answered part of my questions, but I'll start as if they hadn't occurred. The first is, there was no map included, so we didn't know where this was going to be, how far this road construction would be on Peterson Farm Road. And now, it, it's where that 300 marker is on Peterson Farm Road down to Mooney, which answers the question that this is directly, almost directly across the street from that residential area. And since I heard some things at the end of this, that we were getting this for a potential developer, well, we've been through this once before, back in 2011, when this property was owned by KEDF and EIC either bought it or exchanged it for the USDA lab. Well, there was no contract then either, and they went someplace else. So all the effort, all the time we put into it, there's no guarantee that this company will sign with us. Someone else could offer them something in the meantime, and they go elsewhere. The other thing at the time, the EIC board was very concerned about the flooding and the, the cost of road and land construction because, I'm assuming, the flooding. I gathered again, after hearing the information, there's no contract with this company, it's just a potential. And if we do what they want us to do, then they will consider a contract, but consider a contract is not a signed contract to me. And in the Exhibit B, there's $7,500 for a monument. Now, monument to me is like an advertisement that this particular business is just beyond the monument. If that's the case, why are the citizens of Kerrville paying for the business's monument? They should pay for their own, after all. They've made quite a few demands of the city. At the end of this, there was something about the, the road was being constructed for the benefit of the company. Well, also on that Peterson Farm Road, if you continue the other way to 27, we've got a small subdivision, we've got a private high school, and it looks like the citizens come last. The company gets first divvy on money and attention from the city. And I think that once again, the citizens are put on the back burner in this case, in favor of development for a, a private company. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speaker.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other questions or comments, counsel?
I just wanted to say that I think she made a great point there by saying that I think we sometimes put businesses in front of the citizens. The second a business prospect comes to us, we immediately come up with whatever the money needed for a project. But right here in our own city, we have streets that are in disrepair, we have a water supply that is not adequate for our community, and where are the projects to do those first? So, I appreciate that point, that was great. And I move to table this item until the next regular meeting, which will be right after the city, the county's meeting to approve this, and we will get that final version in front of us the day after.
We did not have a second to your motion.
I withdrew it, it's for the speaker.
Oh, okay, so you are making another motion?
Correct, I'm making another motion again.
Do we have a second for the second motion? All right, I'm sorry, Roman, it fails. Do we have a motion, another motion?
The interlocal agreement for the improvement of Al Mooney Road with the minor changes noted previously.
All right, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is four opposed, we have one, council member Garcia. All right, we are ready for 6B.
Economic Development Grant Agreement between Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction Limited and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation. We do have four citizen speakers signed up.
As a part of the push to have the TERRS discussion on November 14th, the request from staff is to also have this item pushed to the November 14th meeting in conjunction with it. And with that, I'll turn it over.
All right, okay. We don't need to vote on that, we just can do that, right, Mike? Just accept that.
I'll come back.
Yes.
Could we, should we hear from the speakers since they've signed up and expected to speak? If anybody wants to still speak?
I think that.
I personally think that we can just wait until it actually is on the docket for us.
It is, that, it is right now.
Well, it's, we're moving it to another meeting, and I, I think we can wait until that meeting, until something could change between now and then, so we'll just.
I just wanted to make sure, anybody who was here, if they still wanted to speak, they may not be able to make the next meeting, that they weren't given an opportunity since they took time out of their evening to be here.
And we appreciate that, thank you.
Well, clearly not enough. And also, it appears that the reason why we're also tabling this is, just so everybody's aware, the grant agreement was not in the agenda packet for this one, it will be in the agenda packet for the next meeting, so you'll actually be able to see what the agreement says, so. Sorry, if, so, any of you that wanted to speak cannot speak.
All right, let's move to 6C, shall we?
An Advanced Funding Agreement, AFA, with the Texas Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative set aside, TASA project. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm here tonight to ask all to enter into an agreement with Texas dot or authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the necessary actions to satisfy Texas dot's requirements on the authorization, or excuse me, the funding agreement for the water line relocation on Highway 27. This is a part of a three-phase project that we've been working on with the Take It Easy Drain. It's got a couple different names depending if you're Texas dot or local or not, but it's the drain that we finished a few months ago, and we just put the concrete lining down below Highway 27 to where it intersects with Boilupi Street. This will be Phase Two of the project. It is actually lowering the culverts on Highway 27 itself. There is a water line that's in conflict with that lowering of those culverts, it's actually right outside of them, and it, and they need to be dug out and put deep enough so the culverts can be lowered as well. So, what we'd like to do is enter into agreement with Texas dot, so we have their contractors actually do the work for us. A lot of those fees are picked, that picked up by Texas dot, like the signage or the traffic control, all of the mobilization fees all paid by that original contract by their contractor, and so this, this add-on for 57,858 would just be the work for the water line. So, with that, we think it's a good opportunity for us to partner with them. We would incur, this, it's under design right now, we're just coming from this agreement, so we're kind of know that Texas dot knows that we are interested, we want to do this, we want them to bid it as part of their project. If there's a different, if there's a change order or something of that nature, then we would be required to pick up those, those costs as well. But it is being designed and engineered to our standards of city specifications, so with that, I'll, I'll open it up for questions.
All right, counsel, any questions for them on this? It's been a long time coming.
It has been, it's a, it's a big project, and hopefully, this will be the, if we get the culverts lowered, we really think that that's gonna be able to drain Lower Street a lot better. That, that's kind of the bottleneck right now, we had to start below and work our way up, and so that's, that's where we're at right now.
I did drive down Lower Street this morning in a, a small cloudburst, just to check everything in actual conditions.
Well, and I have a couple who will be delighted to hear this, they keep, keep sending me emails, when's it gonna happen? When's it gonna happen? So, any other questions, comments, counsel? All right, do we have a motion?
I move.
Do we authorize the city manager and mayor to finalize and execute any actions necessary to satisfy any Texas dot requirements? Is that the?
Second, we have a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. 7A, a recap of a great weekend, a great day. I hope it was as good from you guys' point of view as it was from those of us who were in attendance in the park.
If you do it again, it like, darker maybe?
Less ring of fire. No, it was a great event, it really was, everything we anticipated kind of is what kind of played out in regards to emergency management, that's what we're gonna talk real briefly on today for that. So, what we learned on the annual eclipse, we did an after-action review as a team and came back together what are opportunities we learned moving forward to the April 14th for the, I'm sorry, the April 8th for the total eclipse, and what can we also do better for just event planning? So, we had about 10 to 15% population increase, as expected. It was less than a 4th of July event with visitors for the River Festival and NASA or other events around town also. We had no traffic impact, there was minimal cellular disruption, there was a little poor service in the event area itself, we've seen that before. No impact to the basic needs, food, water, fuel. One of the biggest things, and really, I kind of put this in there, just listing the professionals, and what we really did is really do a lot of research on our part to make sure we could historically take a look at it. History doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes, so we were able to go back and take a look at 2012 and try to see if there's any opportunity for us or things that we need to plan for. We shared the, Stuart shared on the City of Kerrville social media page for Facebook, just the slide comparisons from the annual eclipse to the total. And that slide itself, when put in there, it's got 600, I think, 606 likes, 293 shares, 3,320 engagements, and he said about 29,308 people, that's solar posted at least once. And so, that's good news. And why I like that is not just because we got social media, right, I'm not a huge fan, but the public is watching, and getting that good information out there, the public is important, absolutely, when we start talking about going into the total eclipse, so.
So what are our next steps? We've, we've gathered information, as the chief said, we had an actual, after-action review for our emergency management piece for our October 14th eclipse, this last week in fact, and had some discussion around that. We've reviewed the data from 2017 total eclipse, as we've discussed previously, and we'll continue with the planning for the details for each of our community lifelines that we've identified as we're going forward. We identified a few things from the October 14th event that we know will, will want to change for the April 8th event, and we're making plans and, and working to improve in those areas. We, we're gonna continue to engage additional stakeholders. Each time we meet, we identify new stakeholders out there that we want to be in contact with and, and visit with and ensure that they're up to date. And we're having focused meeting, we'll continue to have focused meetings with our technical experts to, to give us insight on things such as, as our communication systems and what those things, how those will be impacted and, and what we can expect from them, the information that they can provide to us. We'll also be providing public education and information and fact sheets as we move forward. One of the things we've just recently discussed was ensuring that we provide our local businesses with the information that they need to make appropriate decisions as we approach April 8th. We're hoping that folks don't get the April 14th and the April 8th confused, as we have continuously projected April 8th as our heavy population increase, and, and we have routinely said the October event was, was gonna be a much smaller event. I think we had a lot of surprise in the community that it wasn't larger than what it was, but it was kind of as expected on our side. As we move forward, we'll be, we'll be conducting tabletop exercises to test some of our planning as we move closer to April 8th. And we've been in the process of developing an incident action plan and developing our emergency response contingencies. We also have an opportunity to engage all of our city personnel with opportunities to support the operation outside of maybe their daily normal duties. We may have areas where they can help support our operation on that day. And last but not least, is identify funding sources to, to help us pay and support our efforts as, as we take on April 8th. You know, we, we remind folks to, to pay attention to the information as it comes out and really look for areas where they can get trusted information and not the, not to the local rumor mill or, or social media in some points where it becomes, where it becomes twisted just a little bit and maybe made into something that it's not. I think it's gonna be a fantastic event for our city, we need to approach it as such, need to have a positive attitude as, as we move towards that. We hear a lot of doom and gloom around it, but we really need to encourage our citizens to, to enjoy and embrace what the event is and recognize that, that we're doing the best we can to plan for the chaos and manage that on their behalf.
All right, any questions for them, counsel?
What y'all really did well is the weather.
We're hoping for the same, yeah. If we do all this planning and it's not good weather, so, I don't know, so it'll be different before, but thank y'all, and we re-appreciate y'all. Y'all support for that.
You guys did a great job, and one of the things that surprised me were all of the, some of the smaller events that churches were holding or other, other places were holding, and, and I think we'll see that in April, and I think that's, gives them a chance to come together and those entities, and, and it takes a little bit of the, not quite so many people downtown when they do that, so I thought that, I, I, that was a learning thing for me, I didn't, hadn't expected all that, so, so that's, that's great. Thank you, thank you. Keep up the good work. All right, Julie, are you going to give us a one minute?
Don't tip me. I will be brief. So, it's a little too early for me to be giving you any real numbers for year ending '23, but I know that's kind of what we're all anticipating, is how things are gonna end up, as are we and our department. So, we're moving into audit already, as you know, and already starting to talk about budget for next year, so wanted to give you just an overview of what I know, just letting you know, these are estimates, and I think I said this to you last year and probably the year before, so in November, we'll really have better numbers for you, but I just wanted to give you a highlight of a few things. So, general fund revenues, I'm expected to, in the year, better than budget on revenue side by about 465,000. You'll notice the shortfall there on sales tax, this is assuming that my November estimate is right, so remember, we really won't know anything on sales tax until we receive a November payment, which is about the 9th or the 10th of the month. Intergovernmental there, you'll see a shortfall there, that's because our K-Pub franchise fee came back less than we expected it to, I think less than actually K-Pub expected it to, but that's just based on their revenues, and so, as Amy talked through, you know, how their billing works and those kind of things, it's a little bit different and sometimes hard to predict. Service revenue, again, gonna be better than budget, almost 400,000 primarily due to just EMS, and we've talked about that a little bit through the budget process and what we're doing to kind of make sure that we're tracking on that, leveling that as we move forward. Expenses right now are better than budget, a little over 600,000, that's assuming we've caught everything through the accounts payable process. Again, it's early, so we still could have some things that, that come in in the next few weeks, but we're pretty solid, I feel like, on the expense side. Again, anything that's related to streets that wasn't spent within the budget, we'll roll forward into CIP as we usually do, and I'll, like I said, I'll have better numbers for you in November. This is just giving you your usual sales tax chart. I didn't bring October into this because it really gets confusing when you start crossing years, because October in '24, fiscal year '24 is really related to fiscal year '23 revenues, so it gets really confusing, so until we really transition over, I won't bring that in. But just looking at it, September had a 2% increase over last September. We have received October, it is 5% over last October, and we haven't received or picked through that sales tax report. We do know we have some future payments in there, but we also have future payments last year. So, again, we really like to look at that rolling 12-month average instead, so we're 5.6% increase over September of '23 with the 12-month average. So, we're 5.6% increase over September of '23 with the 12-month average. Comparative feedback up a year, and we were over 10%, but, you know, we continue to talk about, we can't maintain double digits forever. But if you look at it, we're 4% over the same period, so year-to-date. So, that's, we still feel like that's pretty healthy, you know, as the economy's gone through what it's gone through in the last 18 months. 38% over fiscal year '21, so to me, that says, you go back really to when we were still kind of pre-COVID situations, more than that, if you back up to '20 and '19. So, you know, it's volatile, but I still think our sales tax is really healthy for, for the economy that we're in right now. Water fund, this is a little bit tighter for me to estimate, but I can give you some facts. So, with stage four water conservation implemented on the 24th of August, billing occurs after consumption, which is why this is even harder for me to estimate, because November billing really does affect fiscal year '23. So, October to October, we're $164,000 behind, so October '23 was behind '22. That's the first month that we've been behind on water sales. And then sewer sales, $27,000, but we don't see the impact from irrigation there on the sewer side. Everything else is kind of aligning, as we've talked about, month over month. I expect that we will have a break-even net position. I don't feel like we'll have excess funds this year, just given to the shortfall in October. I expect to see the same thing in November, just due to watering and just, you know, irrigation basically being shut down for those two months. So, more to come on that. I don't want to guess until we see November 1st and 10th, and then I'll be able to give you better ideas on water.
That's what I was going to ask, that just the fact that we conserved all summer long makes a difference.
It does make a difference, and, you know, we were, you know, trending right along with the water model, and like I said, I still feel like we're going to make water sales as far as an overall budget and in the fund. But if you look at just the line that's water sales, you're going to see it be less because we haven't been watering. You know, there hasn't been sprinkler systems allowed for the, from the 24th of August, so since that's, you know, we're going to work backwards a month, so that's the problem. That's why it's a little harder to estimate. Development Services Fund, really kind of tracking as we've talked about, and they did have a big outsourcing inspection service expense that will have some revenues associated with that, so we'll see, you know, what the next few weeks look like, and if those come in solid, but they'll still be about flat with their budget, which is, which is good. If I didn't flip the slide, that would have helped you.
I was looking.
Yeah, still looking at water fund. So, one we're kind of interested in right now, Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. So, landing about where I expected, I think I've been telling you we were going to miss by about $250,000, so we're going to miss by 255, and that's just on the occupancy tax line. But you can see that, as with every other fund, interest is substantially better than budget, but, you know, we're talking about what the market's doing right now as far as what our investments are, so we're making up a little ground there. And these merchandise and eclipse sponsors, those will be restricted as we move forward. Sparks has been working hard to get donations to cover their event, and then all of our merchandise sales as well. That'll all be restricted, so it will roll into fund balance, but be reserved specifically for those uses as long as, as we need that. On the expense side, you'll see that we're better than budget, basically by $1 million. That's because we didn't transfer the money for the HHHC project, because that project was delayed, so that'll come back as part of our budget amendment, just to clean that up, to roll that forward to fiscal year '24. And then when that project kicks off and those monies are needed, then we'll transfer those out to the Capital Projects Fund. Then lastly, just giving you a little look at what's coming up. So, we started fiscal year '24, October 1st. We did have our S&amp;P credit rating call for the potential EIC bonds. I don't know if you guys saw my email, but I sent you one this afternoon. It came back with an AA minus for S&amp;P. That's actually better than our water revenue funds came back, so surprisingly well for EIC, for sales tax supported only. That's going to allow us to potentially issue those bonds with no reserve fund requirement as we thought that we were going to have to. So, really, really strong bond rating there. And I did send you an email with a chart so that you can kind of get a graphical view...
We were in workshop when you sent that email.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I was still working. I was still working.
That is great news.
Yeah, that was really good news, and I think that anyone who's sat through S&amp;P in the last four years with me will say that every single bond rating call has been different, because every type of, of debt issuance that we've done has been different. So, it's been a learning experience, I think, for all of us, but this was just a little bit different than was the water revenue bond, but different than a property tax-supported debt. So, we'll have that EIC meeting on the 13th. That'll be the public hearing for the issuance of those revenue bonds, and then on the 14th, that will come back to counsel for your consideration. So, the 15th, should all of those things be approved, we'll post that official statement on the ideal website, and then that'll be priced right after Thanksgiving. So, we will have auditors on site that last week of November following, following Thanksgiving. And then TBD, we'll be bringing you guys a solar eclipse workshop, as the chief's talked about, as we're continuing to work through that process. So, as soon as we can get that on the books, we'll be bringing that to you. And then everything contingent and approved, we'll receive those sales tax revenue bonds on December 19th. So, any questions for me? I have a lot more information for you in November. This is just really preliminary, but wanted to give you an update.
Now, your, your number that we're, should come out better than budget, that's fantastic.
That's always good news.
Fantastic. That's great.
Do you have an estimate, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have an estimate in mind of where we are in terms of collection on property taxes for previous years? And just like percentage? Because I know we do that, you know, we continue to collect even after the deadline because of the late taxes, so do you know where we are with that?
Right, so, I mean, I can give you a breakout of what is current and what is, so we're total property tax, we're about $100,000 better than budget, but that's total for all three lines. So, with current property tax and then also prior-year estimates, because those are just, I guess, kind of estimates based on historical data with those other two lines, but I can give you that separated out, but I can tell you that the penalty and interest is less and the prior years is more than we budgeted. So, you know, with that, those combined lines were $100,000 more than total budget. But if you're asking me what percentage of our budget we've actually collected, no, because, again, we still have year-end entries that we have to do. So, until we do all those accrual entries, there's no way for me to know that.
Okay.
All right. Right. Tell your staff thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. I believe we have one last item to take care of. We need to appoint one more individual to the Ad Hoc Animal Regulation Review Committee.
Yes, and at this time, I would like to nominate Reagan Givens, who is the Director of Kerr County Animal Services. And I make a motion that he be added to the committee.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. Oh, I'm sorry, opposed?
Good.
Reverend, Reverend Garcia, Roman Garcia. I've elevated you, I guess.
I haven't elevated to that yet.
Okay. I believe that takes care of everything that we have. Is there anything for the good of the cause or for future agendas?
Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time or the appropriate time to do this, but Drew, I'm going to ask you a question. Sitting on planning and zoning before I came up here, Mrs. Ferguson spoke earlier about approving a final plat. That is the final plat in Comanche Trace, correct?
That was Phase 12B of Comanche Trace.
Which is also a planned development. Is that correct?
That phase is outside of the planned development, but it is part of the development agreement. But from the zoning standpoint, it's not the planned development, but those...
But they, they have the authority to approve that final plat.
Stage four restrictions do not prohibit approval of a final plat. Stage four, excuse me, stage four restrictions prevent or prohibit new connections to be made. The permit for those connections is actually the civil construction plans, which was approved well before we went into stage four. So, that infrastructure had actually already been built and almost completed by the time we went into stage four. So, the approval of the final plat is just PNZ's formal approval and acknowledgement that they've met all of the requirements of the subdivision code and dating that with that approval.
I just want to make sure that that was understood by anybody else, because being on that commission and understanding, I just want to make sure that it's known. Stuart, I'm going to throw one on you. Sorry. Just, the truth needs, it needs to be out there, the total truth. And the total truth is, is we are in stage four right now because we have chosen to stay at stage four because we have wells that we want to get online. Is that correct? Even though Headwaters has gone back to stage three.
That's right. We have two wells that are down right now, and as of 6:45 this morning, the contractor emailed me and said, "I'm still trying, I got one component left that I need to source for you, and then he'll have me a price." And as soon as he gets that, then we'll, we'll get that coming, and, and hopefully we'll have, I'll be able to give you all more of a schedule as to when we can come out. But yes, we have two, we have a number of different wells, two, four larger ones and four smaller ones, and two of the larger wells right now are out of, out of service for maintenance purposes.
Thank you, and thanks for being here to answer that. And Julie, as soon as those wells come online, we'll get some more water revenue.
Appreciate that.
Anyway, thank y'all. I'm sorry if that was not the appropriate time to ask that, but...
It's fine. Not a problem.
Just, I need to...
Thank you. It's good. All right. Anything else, anyone?
Yes, I have a request for a future agenda item. At our next regular meeting, I would ask for a presentation and an action item regarding obtaining the city's water permit with Headwaters.
And for clarification to you, Mayor and Counsel, we've sent two emails, and I think we sent another one today requesting meetings with Headwaters, and we've got no responses from them. So, we don't want to dive too far into that since it is with both, you know, with all the attorneys and stuff, but we are actively trying to meet with Headwaters to resolve those issues. So, we have not had any response from our previous one since I've been on board, we'll just say since I've been here, and then we, we sent another one following.
So, is, is it conceivable that you could have a report, or?
We could provide...
I don't want to put you in a position where we're expecting something and it can't happen.
We will, we will, we will do what we can within the resources that we have. Obviously, we don't really have much until we can get the attorneys and all of us into a room, but we are actively trying to meet with them. The ball's in their court, unfortunately, at this point.
Okay.
We're following the advice of our attorney to secure that water permit.
All right. So, Roman, yes, you have asked, but I would also ask that if they're not able to do what you are expecting, that you won't be disappointed that, if they don't meet your expectations.
We will do our best, Councilmember. So, we, with what we got and the information that we have, we will, we will provide something.
Can I clarify then, so, the expectation, because I want to make sure, is this something you would want to give us in executive session or in the public?
Yes.
It's the executive session, because it's legal matters. So, that's, that's kind of what I'm asking for. I think it's fair that we get an update, what's going on, and, because, you know, I've, I've met with you a couple times, and we've talked about it, and so I think we need to know what's going on and why we don't have a permit, and if there's anything that we need to do on council's side in engaging with Headwaters, not, I'm saying, not engaging legal action, but engaging like, we need to reach out. I don't know what we need to do, but I think we need to have some type of information reported given to us and some action item that we can probably take to get this resolved.
No, absolutely, Councilmember. And really, too, we can put it on to the regular agenda item and just, and tag it to legal, so that way, you know, in the good nature of the public forum, if we have the